The views and opinions expressed by the On the Spot with David Rogers show are solely based on the show's hosts, guests, and viewers. We are solely responsible for all show content in its entirety and does not necessarily reflect the opinions of any sponsors in any way. These broadcasts are presented and made public by the On the Spot with David Rogers team in the hope that it will be entertaining and informative to our viewers and listening audience.
Ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls, children of all ages, it's seven o'clock and time for On the Spot with David Rogers. And now here is Mr. Friday Knight, the show pony himself, the man, the dream, the legendary David Rogers.
All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to On the Spot with David Rogers and Mitchell Gunner. Hey, right here to my right, of course, right here to my left is Michael Heater. Why? Because Mr. Byron Bagwell has been called off some other duties. He will be back next week with us. We've got Dave Holland with us here producing the show. Again, welcome to On the Spot with David Rogers and Mitchell Gunner. Great to have you along. Tonight's show sponsored by the On the Spot Motorsports Facebook page and by Mitchell Gunner Racing. Be sure to follow our favorite NHRA Division Two Summit ET Sportsman racer as he tears up the tracks in the southeastern United States.
And I have to tell you, it's a good looking Facebook page.
Yes, it is. Very good looking Facebook page. And we'll talk about that here in just a little bit. Let's get the show started as we always do with our prayer, our pledge, and our patriotic quote of the night. Ladies and gentlemen, everybody joining us and everybody here, let's bow our heads. Our righteous heavenly Father, let us once again thank you for a wonderful and glorious day, dear Lord. Thank you for this day that you've given us again, and thank you for letting us have this time with our brothers here on the spot with David Rogers brothers as we bring you, the viewers, the information that we see fit. And you take that information and do as you see fit with it. Thank you for letting us live in the greatest country in the world today, the United States of America, the most freest country in the world today, dear Lord, the most powerful country in the world today, dear Lord. Keep a hedge of protection over us as we strive to strive day to day, dear Lord, and to make this country what it wants was, dear Lord, the greatest and the most prolific country in the world today. Thank you for all our armed forces, all the men and women that are serving today, dear Lord, as we're in strifing times, dear Lord, as the Ukraine and the Russia ordeal is going on, dear Lord, and the China and the Taiwan ordeal. Keep a hedge of protection over all of our armed forces, all those men and women, everybody that is serving to help protect not only those nations but for us as well with international and domestic terrorism, dear Lord. Thank you for our first responders, each and every one of those men and women that do the job each and every day to keep us safe, not only in our communities but all over the states and all over the cities in this beautiful United States. Please bring them home safely to their loved ones as well. Thank you for the food that we receive each and every day as goes the nourishment of our bodies and our bodies to thy service. Anybody with a spoken or unspoken prayer request, dear Lord, that you touch each and every one of them as you are the ultimate healer, the ultimate comforter, dear Lord. Touch each and every one of them. Again, thank you for this great day. Thank you for this great week that you're going to give us, dear Lord. And thank you again for just letting us be together one more time. We ask for these things in your son's name, Jesus Christ. And the congregation says, amen.
Amen.
All right, let us stand for the pledge. And I'm going to ask Mr. Mitchell Gunner if you want to lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Amen.
All right. Welcome again to On the Spot with David Rogers. Here we go. To my left, sitting in for thee Byron Bagwell is our director, Michael Heater, joining us. Over here to my right is our local guru. Also, with a brand new page that we'll talk about here a little bit, the motorsports guy himself. We call him what? Speed Racer. He is the Mitchell Gunner. And of course, I'm your host, David Rogers. And again, don't let me forget the esteemed Dave Holland back there producing the show, bringing you all these beautiful graphics and everything that entails on the show. All right, I got a couple of quotes and we'll get right to them. Let's see if y'all can get them. They are founding fathers, so I'll give you that much. So that limits the pool, right? Only to 100 or so, right? That'll depend. "You will never know how much it has cost my generation to preserve your freedom. I hope you will make good use of it." You will never know how much it has cost my generation to preserve your freedom. I hope you will make good use of it.
Sounds like... I... That's... Can I go out on a limb?
Yeah.
I'm gonna go out on a limb.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna say that that was George Washington in his speech as he relinquished the presidency to John Adams.
Very good. All right.
That was Benjamin Franklin as he was kicking back, working on, I think, glasses.
Glasses.
And it just came to his head when he was thinking about signing that Declaration of Independence.
All right. Okay.
Now we get to the accuracy part.
Yeah.
Jefferson.
Y'all all were around it and you were so very close. You were so very close.
Wait, don't tell me it was Adams.
It was. Yeah, but it was right in that time. That was John Adams. Yes, it was.
That's always my first.
But I love the way he broke that down. And I'll tell you, that guy almost could give him that answer because that was very close. It did happen during that time.
Transition.
Yeah. All right. Good job. All right, I'll give it to you.
Okay.
"When the people find that they can vote themselves money, they will herald the end of the republic." Or that will herald the end of the republic. So what he's saying is when you can start getting money, that'll, it'll brainwash you and it'll, you know, you'll just start doing negative things and it'll end what they've all worked for the republic. So when the people find that they can vote themselves money, they will herald, that will herald, excuse me, the end of the republic.
Okay. I'm gonna steal Mitchell's thunder. I'm gonna say Jefferson.
Okay.
Wow, that is a profound statement indeed.
Yeah.
I go back 2,000 years when Jesus Christ was walking through the money changers and tearing all that stuff up. I think he probably said something like that.
So you like Jesus Christ, not bad.
Okay.
I'm gonna go with Benjamin Franklin.
One of you is right.
Well...
One of you is right.
Can I make a different?
Sure you can.
John Adams.
Okay. Still, one of you is right.
There you go.
Well, so Dave, you know it's not you, right?
Clearly.
Clearly. So is one of these guys.
Yeah.
You should have stuck with your first guess and just sent Benjamin Franklin right on over to that second one. It was Benjamin Franklin. What threw that to you?
Just sounded like something he would...
He would just...
He would say, being a very educated guy that he was.
Yeah. And I can see where Jefferson can say that too. So that's a good guesses. I didn't see any guesses here, so that's okay. So, all right, well, let's get the show rolling. It's a new month and a new format.
I thought you had three.
Well, I was gonna do three and I was like, nah, we'll wait. We'll do the third one when Byron gets here. It's a new month and a new format, so don't go anywhere because here comes the roundtable right after this commercial break.
Hey, tornado fans, this is Kurt Miracle of Miracle Automotive and Towing, proud sponsors of tornado football. I want to welcome you to beautiful Stark, Florida at David Hurst Stadium. And thank you for letting us be a part of this community. We're here for more than your automotive and towing needs. We're here to be part of tornado country. Go Big Red.
This is the all-new roundtable. We go around the region around the table with the latest news and notes. Here we go. Brought to you by Hairy Business in the Deerfoot Plaza, home of the $10 haircut. Call David Cuddy, 904-964-3338. That's 904-964-3338. We begin in Letchwood County where there is a new top cop in the city of Alachua. Chief Jesse Sandusky was sworn in at the Alachua City Commission meeting last night, has 18 years of experience, Mitchell, serving in various roles, including detective, public information officer, and honor guard.
Hey, also coming up this week, guess what it is? Well, actually, not this week, but next week is the Bradford County Fair. We'll be coming to start, starting on the 8th.
Yep.
And we'll run all the way through till Sunday.
All right. Hey, let me ask something real quick. Michael, maybe you can answer this. Somebody asked me, why is the fair only five days now?
That's, and that's a great question. The fair was reduced to five days simply because of the spring scheduling. The entertainment companies that do fairs are basically being spread out. A lot of fairs are now in the fall, but the springtime is when they have their biggest push. They had to shorten it to five days for two reasons. One, financial. They couldn't necessarily afford to pay for the fair folks for the seven days that they were trying to get.
Right.
It also means that that gives them a chance to schedule to go to other venues. So by shortening it to five days, it saves them a little bit of money, but it also was a scheduling issue with the, with the companies that do it, that put on the fair simply because they have other events they have to pack up and head to as they go through the spring months.
Well, we hope that that answered your question right there. I wasn't for sure. The answer, I figured it was one of those or a combination, so wasn't sure which one it was.
Well, you're going to the fair, right?
Yeah, we're gonna be there. We're gonna be broadcasting for now, I do believe. But Michael's trying to get us hooked up with that, so hopefully we can be there.
There you go.
All right, over to Marion County where the sheriff's office arrested an Ocala attorney last week on many charges. Listen to this, including unlawful sexual activity with a minor. Last Wednesday, a detective was told that an adolescent victim reported that 48-year-old, Jason Volkman, sexually assaulted them. He remains behind bars. That is crazy.
Hey, listen to this. "A man is lucky to be alive after falling from the second story above Tony and Al's Pizza last night. Patrons inside the restaurant, including a retired paramedic and a deputy, observed a man in his 30s land on the sidewalk on Call Street shortly after 7:00 PM. The man was taken to the local hospital for his injuries."
Now, I will say, and just because I happen to have a little bit of knowledge of this one, Debbie Chuck Johnson of Bradford County Sheriff's Office was one of the individuals that rendered care to the individual until firefighters from Stark Fire Rescue and Bradford County Fire Rescue arrived. The man, again, was taken to the hospital for injuries. None of them appeared to be life threatening and there was no obvious blood loss. Pretty lucky considering that it had been raining and everything like that one. So all's well, that ends relatively well because it could have been a lot worse.
Right. And hopefully they can give this gentleman some help that he may need.
Exactly.
In a major change to Florida high school football, ladies and gentlemen, the FHSAA Board of Directors voted on Wendy Mitchell and Michael nine to seven to divide its member schools into metro, suburban, and rural classifications, thus creating nine state championships and a potential for greater competitive balance. The metro classification will consist of schools in Florida's eight most populous counties, Dade, Broward, Palm Beach, Orange, Duval, Hillsborough, Pinellas, and Seminole. No North Florida schools fit this category.
Other than Duval.
Other than Duval.
Right.
The suburban classification will consist of schools in the remaining 59 counties. In the suburban classification, 30 schools will fall in Class 1A while 33 schools considered rural will be in Class 1A, including all of the schools in and around our region with enrollment of 600 or less. That is a great, great thing for everybody in this state, let me tell you. This also, Michael, levels the playing field a little bit and puts those Christian schools and people that can recruit and bring like Bowles, Trinity Christian, you know, those schools up in that upper echelon where they will have to play bigger public schools.
And again, it's a matter of fairness. And when you think about Class 1A schools, depending on the size and everything like that one, I mean, with, no pun intended, okay, it's a pun intended, but when they get bowled over...
Right.
You know, by Bowles and Trinity Christian schools like that one. Or you play for, you play for a state championship and you leave, you leave the rural areas of North Florida and then you end up down in South Florida and then you get steamrolled over by those schools.
I.e. Michael, what happened to McClainey at Miami Central? They held their own for about a half and then there goes Miami Central's dominance. And then they scored the next 56 points or whatever it was.
Well, I think it's totally unfair completely to be able to allow high schools to be able to recruit players all over the region of Florida to come play at their school and to play against other high schools. I think it's something that should have never been allowed.
Right.
And it's very unfair and unjust for other schools, especially schools in rural areas.
Michael and Mitchell, I'll tell you what I would like to see. I would like to see schools like Bowles, Trinity Christian, all these, you know, the one that's down south that's so prominent, American Heritage. All those schools like that have their own classification.
Yes, I do agree with that.
And I think we're on the right track with this one. I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a save all across this one.
No.
But having it in a metro division means that those, those larger schools will play each other and they'll play for a state championship. Then you've got the suburban, which is the smaller classification, but greater than 600 enrolled, that will play for their state championship. And then the rural counties, which again, in most areas is going to be Class 1A, they'll play for a state championship. And again, it brings parity. It brings, it levels the playing field, for lack of a better term, because again, now, just like you said, and Mitchell, just like you said, we can't go back and change the rules for the recruiting.
No.
But when you think about it, recruiting is predominantly in those metro areas.
Yes, they are.
This will help those teams battle it out. And then it allows the smaller schools, the more rural areas to play and win championships where it was meant to be played on the field locally with your homegrown teams.
Yeah, and that's exactly why. And one more thing I want to add to that is, is it also saves you. You're talking about Bowles. Bowles is in Duval County. So now Bradford, unless you schedule them just in the regular season, you don't have to go through them to the playoffs like Michael just said. The parity is divided now. Now you will play like schools in your class. And I think that's the way it should be anyway.
Yes, I agree. I totally agree. Thank you.
What you got, Mitch?
I just want to let everybody know, coming up on March the 26th, we were going to hold the car show on March the 29th for Amanda Milson. She's a young lady that is fighting stage four cancer. But due to the Gainesville Street Rodders holding their big car show at Santa Fe Community College, we decided to roll it back one week to the 26th.
Right.
I think that will help us out and them out at the same time, only being like 26 miles from each other. And I think we're going to be charging $20 a car. They also are going to have a motorcycle poker run that's going to be taking place. And we will be giving awards to the motorcycles as well. Top five motorcycles, best of show motorcycle. We're going to have best of show for vehicle and top 20 for the, for regular vehicles. This is all going to take place at the Florida Cracker Restaurant located on Highway 100 and 21B. So I'll be updating...
Home of the new flashing lights.
That is correct.
Yep.
And I will be heading up the show and it was an honor for her dad to reach out to me. He's been to a lot of my shows and asked me if I would do something for his daughter. And, you know, that's what it's all about, is helping other people.
Somebody told me that you was going to be leading the poker run, motorcycle poker run.
No, I won't be...
On your big wheel.
No, I don't have one. I don't even have one.
You don't have one of them? Actually, you got a guy that can lead it right there. He's got a brand new bike right there. And I bet if you ask Dave Holland, I bet he'd lead that poker run.
I got a backseat.
Also want to mention, coming up April the 2nd and the 3rd, is going to be the Bradford County Strawberry Festival that will be taking place at the Bradford County Fairgrounds. That also will have lots of vendors. We will have a car and truck show on that Saturday. So I think it's a lot of fun. We've got a lot of things happening in our area in the month of March and April. Not to mention, Gainesville Raceway will be hosting a Division Two race this, this coming weekend. If you haven't been, it's, it's actually pretty affordable to go. The tickets can be bought at the gate. And then of course, the next following week is the Gator Nationals.
Right.
That will be taking place from the 10th through the 13th. So, and you can go online and you can purchase those tickets through Ticketmaster.
Nationals?
Yeah. And by the way, I'm going to turn it over to Michael real quick here in just a minute too. Do you want to tell everybody real quick while we got a second right here about your page, about the new page?
Sure.
And what's going on?
Sure, we actually have a new page. It's called On the Spot Motorsports with David Rogers. A lot of the graphics that's up on the page is thanks to Michael Heater for making that possible. And we created this page to actually try to get more motorsports on that floor instead of this one.
Yes.
Because this one, we're kind of more news based than we are motorsports based. And right now, we're closing in on 500 followers. As soon as that happens, we will start doing shows.
Nice.
At least once a week. We have some interviews that will be coming up from the Gator Nationals. Those will take place on the 12th out there. And hey, and if you're out at the Gator Nationals and you're walking around the pits, walk down there to the Pro Mod pits, to Lyle Barnett's because there's going to be some logos on there on the spot that we're going to place on that vehicle.
Yes, we are.
And I'll tell you what, it's, we're going to actually interview Lyle out there after qualifying on that Saturday. And hopefully we can get a couple of other drivers on as well. And we'll try to reach out to Erica Anders, which we've had her on the show once before. And she's actually already won the first race of the season, taking place out in Promona. And her teammate had, I believe, has won the second event that took, took place in Phoenix. So there seems like they're on a roll and we'll see if they can continue. But yeah, just go to that page, like it.
Yeah.
You'll get all the motorsports news that's going on. You know, we don't just concentrate on drag racing. You'll see stuff on there from NASCAR to NHRA. We're going to try to start dirt tracks, IndyCar.
I tell you, well, you know what the best part about that page is, in my opinion, is that you promote what's going on at the firm. And that is a local event that we do here.
Yes.
And I love the fact that I can go to the On the Spot Motorsports page and see what's happening at the firm, which means that if I wanted to take in some local racing action, I know exactly where to see it.
Right. And you know, I've got to coordinate some things with the firm and hopefully I can bring some coverage of the RallyX series that they do out there on, I think it's almost every other week that they have the races out there. Plus, you know, when they have the Jeep events out there, I like to cover those as well. This past weekend, I was able to cover a little bit of Cars and Coffee. Bring a lot of, a lot of pictures of the vehicles that were out there, some of the action live on the track. And man, I would love to get out there on the track with mine, but unfortunately I had to leave a little early. I had to go attend church. But I'll tell you what, they had a, had a great, a great crowd out there. And that's the type of things that we want to promote. If you're a business, a garage, or anything like that, and you're interested in being a marketing partner of that page, please reach out to me. My telephone number is 904-966-1386. Or you can email us at onthespot@32091@gmail.com. What did you say? I said onthespot@32091@gmail.com.
There you go. There you go. You got that finger right there.
And to let everybody know, that email attaches to both of our pages.
Yeah, I wanted to mention that, guys. Yeah, we created this page because we didn't want to be separated. Mitchell Gunner does a lot of great things with the news and the local things that he brings. So does Michael Heater as well, helping direct the show. So we wanted to keep it tied in. So in case you needed a co-host, I can go on, Michael can go on, Byron can go on. We do have a young lady that's going to be working with us. Her name's CeCe Marie. She's going to be joining you on several different things and several different events that y'all go to. But we wanted to keep it tied in so it wasn't separated. So it doesn't look like we pushed you off or, or whatever, you know? People, people think weird sometimes. And it's like, well, it's, no, it's all tied in. We all want it to be together. We just didn't have enough space and enough time within the realm of the things that we do, Michael, to keep bringing in motorsports and, and interviews and things like that. And what a great avenue for you because you know this, to bring on special guests, you can interview them for a certain amount of time. You know what I mean? Instead of under a timed umbrella because, you know, we're trying to get a lot of stuff out within this show as well.
Yeah, you know, and we, we all sit down and we all, all discuss this and we thought it was the best route to go. And also, maybe it'd be easier to attract some marketing partners.
Yes.
Especially into motorsports. And that can actually help benefit both shows. So I think it's, it's a great opportunity. And I tell you, every time that I turn to the page or I update it with news, I'm looking on there, we're gaining followers, you know, four or five people, sometimes four or five people in a couple of hours.
Depends on what you post.
Right. It's slowly building up. A lot of people's reading those posts and they read them and, you know, people's asking me to be their friend. I really don't know them. And so I add them to my friends and then I send them an invite to follow our page, both pages.
Yep, that's it. Because it does hit both pages.
Yes. And I'll tell you, even On the Spot with David Rogers, we are almost up to 3,000 viewers. So it has actually grown quite a bit as well.
And that's a tribute to all you guys, which y'all do, the different things. Everybody thinks, you know, hey, it's me. No, 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 no. This is you. This is Michael. This is Byron. This is Dave. It's all of us putting our efforts together and bringing this thing to the forefront. And it takes all of us to do it.
And of course, we have the coolest Agum Studio at risk for motorsports.
For motorsports, yeah. You'll get to see that, by the way. We won't give that away just yet. But that's going to be really a great studio. Michael, what do you have?
So real quick here, Mitchell, if you'd do me a favor, slide that a piece of paper there to me.
Oh, yes, yes, absolutely.
So just a real quick update. Mitchell was, was busy doing his thing like that. So I sat in for him at the City Stark Commission meeting tonight. There was a couple of things that came up that they discussed. One, a couple of things that got tabled unfortunately due to illness and some people over there. The future land use plan was table for further discussion, as was an ordinance for the zoning map for land development. That will be coming up, probably in the next commission meeting coming up in two weeks. One thing that was approved by the city commission is finally and formally, we can announce that on Saturday, April 9th, the latest Touch a Truck event and outdoor concert has been approved by the city of Stark. We will be performing our Touch a Truck event on Call Street, not at the fairgrounds this year. It has been three years since our last touch drop.
Has it been that long?
COVID really took a hit on it because we were going to do it in 20, you know, and then COVID was in, then 21. Anyway, so we're finally bringing Touch a Truck back. It's going to be on Call Street, stretching from Thompson Street where Dinks is. It's going to go up on Call Street, cross over the tracks and go to the stage area. It's going to be from 10 until about 1:00 PM. But that's not the best part. Best part is, is, and again, pending sponsorships, which we're hoping for, but I'm proud to announce that On the Spot with David Rogers and the Fantastic Fire Brigade are the two title sponsors for the Majesty of Rock concert that will be performed at 6:00 PM on Saturday, April 9th. This is a band coming from Fort Myers. They're a covered band, but they perform the biggest hits from Journey, Styx, and Toto. And they will be performing onstage. It is a free concert. Come out, bring chairs, bring blankets, whatever you wanted to do. We're opening up the street around 2:00 or 2:30 so that anyone can come downtown, park, and eat at the local restaurants. So you've got the Downtown Grill, the Thai Restaurant, Tony and Al's, all these different restaurants. Get a chance to get out, enjoy the scenery, enjoy the area, and then enjoy a fantastic concert. If you want a sneak peek on what you could see in Stark on April 9th, this Saturday night, March the 5th, Majesty of Rock will be performing in the city of Alachua at their open air pavilion. And needless to say, I'll be there. And that will be, but they will be performing in Alachua, March the 5th, and they will be here on April the 9th. We are still looking for sponsors for that event as well. It is a little bit pricey. But if you would like to join On the Spot with David Rogers and the Fantastic Fire Brigade as sponsors for this huge event, the Touch a Truck and the concert, feel free to hit us up. You can visit us here. Or you can reach out to us on our Facebook pages, either On the Spot with David Rogers or the Fantastic Fire Brigade.
All right, great report. I know we got one more thing that we definitely want to talk about. I'll tell you what, let's talk about that and then I'll get my news right and then we'll go to the weather. So hey, everybody knows we just had a big county commissioners meeting. Mr. Dave Holland was there live for On the Spot with David Rogers. By the way, great camera work. You were right there. Great audio. A couple of little things here and there, but nothing to... It was, it's the building sometimes, you know what I mean? But you were right there. We heard everybody. it was the, it's the building sometimes, you know what I mean? But you were right there. We heard everybody speak. It was about, of course, the franchise fee that they wanted to try to give to uh Clay Electric users. Mainly it was Clay Electric. Yeah, I didn't hear much of FPL. Maybe I tuned off of it.
Well, but now what happened is is the Florida Power and Light had came in and said, hey, look, Clay Electric, you take the lead. Whatever is voted on for Clay Electric, we will piggyback on it. So if it's a 3% for Clay, then Florida Power was going to push for 3% as well. So it was uniform for all of the unincorporated areas of Bradford County.
A representative of FPNL wasn't there, but they did write a letter and the um city manager read it, I believe. County manager, yeah. And um, uh, one of the people sitting in there, uh, he made a good comment. Let's call it for what it is. It's a tax hike.
Uh, yeah.
It's not a franchise fee.
Well, you know.
I thought that was pretty interesting.
Well, there was a lot of people there, the community actually did show up. Unfortunately, I couldn't make it. I had all hopes of making it there, but sometimes work takes precedence. Uh, and I had to take care of that first. Uh, but Dave, thank you for bringing that to everybody. That was, that was really great. And I'll tell you, the citizens have spoken. They said they did not want this
Absolutely.
franchise fee placed on their uh light bill. You know, and, and a lot of things, what happens when you say, well, this is going to be a temporary thing? It never is a temporary thing. Once that is in place, it never gets removed. Uh, and it is kind of like a tax. I mean, it really is kind of like a tax that people's having to pay. Uh, but I think, you know, after listening to all the complaints and everything, I really don't think where the commissioners are going to vote for it. But there's a lot of other options out there and I've been to commissioner meetings before and I've got up and spoke. And I always spoke about impact fees and impact fees are the way to go because when people build houses or businesses, it is an impact on the community and an impact on our police department, our fire rescue and, and our road department, pretty much everybody. And you know, the, the thing about the impact fees, say if you made it 1,500, I mean, sorry, fif- yeah, 1,500 or a thousand dollars. Well, you have the option of escrooving that into your, your mortgage. Or you can go, go down and pay it straight out. Well, here is my thousand dollars or 1,500 dollars for my impact fee. And after that's paid, that's it. You don't have to pay it anymore after it, after it's gone. And you know, we have a lot of houses that's being built in our county and or, you know, there's going to be a whole development out at around Sanson Lake. I think of 240 something homes. So you take 240 homes, okay? And the impact fee is a thousand dollars, which is very, very minimum compared to Clay, Alachua and, and probably even Putnam and Marion County. It, it is very, very low. And I mean, that is a lot of money that is generated. And of course, I do understand when impact fees are intimate, intimated that yeah, you, they have to stay within that area of the county, which what does that do? It frees up other monies here to be used. Uh, so to me, that's always been, my role is to try to bring impact feeds back to Bradford County because we haven't done it in a very long time. And the county's losing a lot of money. I mean, you look at 21B at the houses that's been put out there. It's almost 20 something houses and they're still developing more. Hampton is even getting houses. Atlanta's being developed for houses to go in, in Hampton area.
Well, and I can tell you and, and hey, I can, I can guarantee you that I can give you a direct number because any new construction is going to require a new address. And guess who handles all the addressing in Bradford County? So, you know, so it does. And that brings up the impact fee is absolutely the way to go because there are so many other areas that that does. It frees up monies that allows us to kind of juggle the budget. And I think that um, and there, there were some concerns that were raised. There was some a little bit of ruffled feathers and that sort of thing like that. But I think this was a discussion that had to happen.
Let me tell you what, let me tell you what I see of this. Just in nutshell, Dave, tell me if you agree you were there. I think some of the commissioners are going to vote for this. I'm going to already tell you, I know. Y'all don't think so. I'm telling you, it's not going to be four or five oh. Some, I, just what was uh said during that, uh, during that particular meeting. I know two particular people that were like, hey, we need to get this done. And um, okay, so I don't think this is going to be a complete sweep. Personally, I don't think Clay Electric wants to do this. I don't, they, Clay, Clay Electric don't want to do this. I think they just got to got
Because of the budget issues.
And also, when you are in debt or you're, you're in the hole, $2 million, you know, you've got to cut, you've got to figure out somewhere to, to be able to re- to, to recoup this. And what's the best way? Who has to pay for this? They're not going to pay for it. It's how are we going to get the public to pay for it? The public's finally standing up and saying, hell no, we're not going to pay for this. If you ain't got the money, don't spend it.
Right.
It's like your checkbooks. It's like your accounts. Mitchell, if you want a $500 gun, but you've got $400 in your bank account, can you go buy that gun?
No, you wait for it to go on sale.
There you go. Right. Right. But you don't have 500. I love it. But you're, you know what I'm saying. You're not, you can't afford a $500 gun if you've got $400 to pay for it. So are you going to buy it?
No.
You gonna buy it?
Absolutely not.
And that's what all these people were saying. Balance your budgets.
Right. Well, you know, there's a lot, a, a big mention because of the salaries that are part of the fire rescue department. But let me tell you, those, those, those men and women, they have went to school and they've got a lot of training. And you compare that to other counties, there's really that much difference.
Let, let, let me, let me explain something to you. Now, everyone who knows me knows that I am not on the fire rescue bandwagon. I mean, I'm a retired fireman, but there's, there's that. But let me tell you folks, if you saw the commission meeting and if I may.
Yes, you may.
Somebody, I, and I, and I love, and, and some of you that are watching, I'm talking to you and you know, I love you like family. But a little homework here. The firefighters in this county, not the chiefs, I'm talking the, the firefighters, make just over $12 an hour.
Yes.
The reason why the numbers look so big is because you have to remember that you're talking about firefighters that are working 56 hour average weeks, not 40 hours.
Right.
Okay. And then there's overtime and a lot of it because they don't have the ability to bring in a lot of people because they only pay $12 and change an hour. So firefighters are leaving for higher paid positions. So the numbers look inflated. They're really not. You also have to understand that you're paying for a level of service that is been requested by your neighbors, by your family, by your constituents and everything without this one. So, you know, if you don't want a volunteer based system, which is what the community told the commission going back years ago, you know, we weren't getting the volunteers. We need a paid position. Okay, you've got it. There's only six firefighters and two lieutenants on duty on the fireside at any given time. Six firefighters. There are four on duty with the City of Stark. You could have working fire. We got 10 firefighters, two officers and a few chiefs. On average, from my experience, from teaching and from working the job, if, if there's an injury inside a house or a rescue to be made, it takes 15 people coordinated effort to get inside, to do a search, to get the smoke out, extinguish the fire, do what you gotta do. We're already working in a vacuum. We're already in a vacuum. You have got, and again, I'm not defending anybody. I'm laying out the facts. There are levels of service that must be maintained. Volunteers cannot do it to the level that they used to be from training requirements, the hours that needs to be put in and simply the time it takes. People work two jobs. People work extra hours. They've got families. They've got, and I get it. I mean, if they came out and said, hey, look, we're going to reinstitute the volunteer program, I would raise my hand, upset my wife and say, I'm going to do it. But I also know that I've already got the training and it takes a lot of effort to bring that level of training because you're paying for performance, but you're paying for potential. If you're trapped in a burning car from a car accident and you need someone to show up with the jaws of life, you're not waiting for a dentist and you're not waiting for, you know, you're not waiting for an accountant. You're waiting for a professional who's going to come in and that's the level of service that this county is providing at the request of the citizens. So it's kind of hard to sit here and go, oh, well, we don't want to pay for this one if you're already asking for it.
You gotta pay, you gotta pay for your services.
That, 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 that's my take on it. And I'm looking at this from, from, from the perspective of I've served a community. I did 38 years under the helmet and I know, I understand what it takes. And I may not be the biggest cheerleader for, for the management, but I'm telling you, they are doing the best they can with what they have. And if you want that level of service, you gotta pay for that level of service.
Right. And, and if you don't really think that they're performing, all you have to do is go to the sheriff's webpage, go to the CAD and you can put in the date and you can look how busy that they are day in and day out. And you know, sometimes, you know, someone said, well, I seen a ambulance coming back from Gainesville and they were going a little fast. Well, you know why they're probably going really fast? Because they're having to get back into their county. Because the other ambulance is coming, going into Gainesville and they're trying to get back to cover the area. Um, but go ahead, Dave.
Uh, there was a comment that um, at the meeting the other night uh where um, well, when you have a 911 call, you have uh, uh, several cop cars show up. You have an ambulance show up and you have two or three fire trucks show up and there's no fire or nothing like that.
And that's a great point. That's a question that comes up in every agency. So let's take this for example, let's say um, let's say that um Uncle Steve has a heart attack. Okay? Chest pain. And now all of a sudden he's having trouble breathing and he's now unresponsive. A deputy may be faster because they're on patrol and they're certified to carry AEDs, defibrillators. We can get a deputy there to you. If my, if my dispatchers are deploying units and they can get a deputy there in two minutes and it takes the ambulance four minutes, that's two minutes faster to try to restart that heart. If we're doing CPR, after about two minutes of CPR, and if you've never done CPR before, trust me, it will wear you out. You have to rotate people through. So let's think about the math. And again, forgive me for going on this one, but let me explain how this is going to go. I've got two people on an ambulance. I've got two people on a fire engine. I've got a deputy and a lieutenant, a fire lieutenant that's there. Okay, that's seven people, six people. Okay, six people. I've got to have one person controlling the airway, making sure that we're breathing oxygen. I've got three people rotating, doing CPR every minute, half to two minutes, doing the compressions because it'll wear you out. Okay, we have to have somebody else who's standing on the side administering the drugs, making sure that we get the epinephrine on board, the, whatever drugs we need to give to make sure that we get that heart started. Okay? Now we've got to get this patient on a backboard, lift it up and put him on the stretcher while doing CPR. That's going to take more people. I've already expended six people working cardiac arrest. I need all hands on deck. Now, of course, the question is, well, yeah, but uh, you know, Uncle, Uncle Steve was having, having a stomach, uh, stomach pain and, and we didn't need all that help. Yeah, you're probably right. And our dispatchers do an amazing job of transferring 911 calls or taking the calls in rather and, and triaging them. Okay, is it an illness call? Well, we're just going to send an ambulance. But we err on the side of caution. We want to send a fire engine there to make sure that that crew is going to be okay in case he stops breathing or all of a sudden it's a, it's a chainsaw injury and he's bleeding a lot. Well, you know, it takes more than one person to, to package it. We got to carry the stretcher out because they can't do it themselves. These roads are not the best condition, so you have to be able to negotiate. We're providing a level of service. And again, we're going to err on the side of caution. We're going to send the cavalry and if we don't need them, we can always cancel them. But to be on the safe side.
Yeah, I think the per- person that made that comment wasn't thinking about all the, the elements that went into that.
They never do until they're in that situation.
It's always good to, to have it if you need it. And if you don't need it, it's good to be there.
And also to, to 911's credit, if someone calls and they're not, they're panicking and they're not giving all the correct information, you're, you're going to send a cavalry.
We send the cavalry.
Because they, they can't tell you everything that's what's wrong. But if you can get ahold of someone that's calm, that can explain every situation.
I'll give you an example. I'll give you an example. Last night's situation. The caller reported somebody falling from the second floor of a building. That right there got a big response. Now, of course, we get there and he's injured wrist and leg and hips and he's, but he's awake. He's got, okay, so it's not as serious, but we did not know that at the time of the call. So we send all the help. If we don't need them, we cancel them. We get there. And, and so there, there, there's so much more that goes on. And I don't mean to be beating a, a dead horse here, but there's so much that goes into public safety from the 911 system to fire rescue to law enforcement responding to medical calls. This is all set up in a system that's been tried and true that allows us to provide the best level of service for the money and the budget that we have.
Well, um, to go back to uh Dave's assumption of the, the commissioners on whether, you know, they're all going to vote or some are going to vote or, uh, well, one of them just blatantly uh made a comment that he's stepping out of it completely.
Right.
At the meeting.
At the meeting. Yeah, I heard that.
And if you go to um, On The Spot, you can view that um, meeting and you can make a judgment of yourself because I had the cameras on all the commissioners
Yes, you did.
and the speakers. So you can make your own decision of who you think is going to vote.
And that was my, again, and that was my opinion of what I seen through what you take and what was said. Now, y'all, oh bro, Michael, that was an excellent, excellent breakdown. Don't, hey, look, you didn't beat a dead horse. I know. Hey, I'll speak to you later. Uh, you either. But I want to say something here. I don't think it's the service that everybody's.
He's 911. I don't think he'll beat a dead horse.
Uh, maybe not. So I don't think, I don't think it's the service that everybody's complaining about. Let me ask you gentlemen, we, we can put this in 30 seconds. If we was in the black and we had 10 million dollars to operate on, would we be hearing any of this garbage?
No, of course not. No.
No. It's because we're deficit, we're in the hole on the budget. That's why. Now we're nitpicking what Michael and them just brought down. Oh, we have too many uh fire rescue guys. We have too many police officers, too many police officers, too many firefighters are going to this call, that call. Why are we doing that? Because they're trying to put something on us, the citizens that is pretty much really, I mean, you think about this county, what they make, $24,000 average, I think salary, is that, is that right, Mike? $24,000 salary. And you keep taxing them, you keep taxing them, you keep taxing them. Not only you get taxed from your local, you get taxed from your federal government as well. They want this and they want that. People are tired of it. Balance the budget. If this budget was in the black, what y'all just said, I don't even think you hear anything about it.
And to go ahead and put a perspective on this, this is something that just hasn't developed. We've had other commissioners and other commissioners before them. They have been kicking the can down the road for years. And now we're in a pickle. I mean, something has to be done. And you know, that's.
We, this conversation was, this, this conversation is at, at least 10 to 12 years old. I remember when I came here the first time back in 20, you know, again, in 2011, we were having the same conversation. Their volunteers do good work, but we need more. We want a professional department. We want this. We want this one. Well, you finally got it. But you gotta pay for it. Now, are there other options that you could, you could for? There's a hybrid system where you could do a stipend for certified volunteers that would save you some money and benefits and that sort of thing like that. Sure, you could. But ultimately, when you call 911 and you want a fire engine to come to your house because the kitchen's on fire or Uncle Steve is not breathing or that baby is choking or that car is flipped over and there's somebody trapped inside, you want the Cadillac service. You want that professional, you want the doctor, the engineer, the construction guy, everything that goes into the job. And you want him on a half million dollar piece of equipment that's going to carry everything but the kitchen sink and you want him there in 90 seconds. And, and that is what you, if, if that's what you want, then you have to understand that you've got to make allowances for that service or you have to change your perspective on what you're willing to settle for.
Well, one of the things I like to do, Michael, I like to try to get the budgets for each department and go over them right here on the show uh to let everybody know how much that we actually, actually spend each year and what we're looking at spending for this year's cycle. And one of the things I've never And one of the things I've never seen, I'm not saying that they don't, I'm pretty sure the sheriff's department does with what, uh, our sheriff says Gordon Smith. But I've never really told, heard them talk about budget constraints for the departments. Where you do your projected plan out and I've asked for this several times before in commissioner meetings. Why don't y'all show the public your budget constraint plan for the next couple of years' cycle? So we would know what you need as far as equipment being replaced, what is, uh. Costs them more money to maintain.
Right.
Than it would be to replace, you know, so you would put that in, say, well, you know, we're having this problem with this equipment, this equipment's fifteen years old. It's almost out of its cycle, so we need to budget it in the twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, year's cycle budget. So we'll put it in our budget constraint and we'll make sure that we have the money to match that as we get there. That's what a lot of your, your big counties do and I don't know if we do that because I can't get an answer if we do budget constraints for each of the departments.
I love what they tried to do the other night and, and, and tell me if you didn't see this, and Denny Thompson got pissed off. Holy goodness, when those county commissioners, especially, I'm just calling her, but Ms. Andrews, said, hey, I need to get a budget plan from you. Absolutely the wrong answer. You should be budgeting your own self. You should be the one creating this. You should be, be the one maintaining this. Don't count for the clerk, uh, right, the clerk. Court to give you a budget. I'm waiting on that. Denny Thompson basically, man, oh goodness gracious, I'm surprised he sat in chair.
You know what the clerk said in response to that?
Denny, yeah.
Yeah, he said, well, all you gotta do is get up and walk across the hallway.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and you know, and, and the thing is, you know, each department is responsible for their budget. That's, that's the way it is.
Yeah.
They, they were totally responsible for their budget. But, you know, at the, at the same time, the commissioners themselves. Have the chance, like he said, if you wanna know what a, a department's budget is, come to my office and you can get a printout of it.
Only one person, only one person is doing that right now. And, and I, 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 I guess I, well, with, with the exception of Gordon, cause he's got his own budget and that's Kenny Thompson. Kenny Thompson knows exactly what's going on because Denny said, hey, he calls me every week. Kenny, Kenny, did I say, what I said?
You said Denny.
Denny, no. No, Kenny calls Denny.
Okay.
Kenny go, hey, that's a rhyme anyway. Kenny calls Denny every week. Yes, there you go. Kenny calls Denny every week and says, hey, what's going on? And Denny even admitted that.
Right.
So, you know, you, you've got to follow up on your own stuff. If you don't, like you said, that budget that you're talking about. If you're not following up on your own budget, it just gets further and further and further back and then where's the starting point of any of it?
Exactly, you know, and one thing like, you know, our larger counties, they have an O and B department, the O and B department is pretty much over purchasing. For every, every department will go to that O and B department to make sure that the money is there and get the approval. We don't have that here.
No, we don't.
And that is maybe something that the county should look at. Yes, it's another, it's another spot that someone's got the feel. But you know, a lot of counties got several. There's like six or seven of them. Well, Bradford County's not that big. Probably one person can oversee, see that and make sure that the money's there for each department. So even though you'll have to pay for another employee, it may save you in the long run. To get you out of the trouble that we're in now and to keep us out of, out of the red and, and stay in the black.
And this is a great subject, guys. I know we gotta get the show moving on, but I tell you, we could talk about this for hours. Maybe we'll table some of this over. And we'll talk about it on the next show for sure because like I said, Michael gave some great information on how the nine-one-one system, the emergency, uh, management, uh, works. He, he gave that whole breakdown and I agree with everything they said because if you look, if you've ever had rescue come for you, which has came for me before. And the steps that Michael said was exactly how it played out and how it happened.
Right, and, and I do wanna mention, I know one of the county commissioners wasn't there. And a lot of people were very, very upset why he was not there.
Yeah, really.
I don't know what the reason is, but this was a very important thing. And I, I get along with this commissioner.
Me too.
So I think it had to be something very important and, and probably personal, the reason why he didn't show up. But, uh, those meetings are, that is very important when you have something going on like this. You have to be present in that seat. And you know, you need to pay attention to your commissioners and make sure that they are listening to the people that they represent, not just in their district, but for the whole county. And if they're not fulfilling your wishes as a commissioner, well, you, you vote them out. Uh, if they are doing their job, you, you keep them hired.
Yep.
And so just, just keep that in mind.
Well, again, I'm, I'm, I'm a real good friends with this, uh, commissioner as well. Done a lot of stuff for me. I've done a lot of stuff for him. Michael's good friends.
They'll work for any of them.
No, at all. But I know he was getting railroaded for that, the first few minutes of that deal. Uh, he was really getting railroaded about that. And again, I don't know what was going on that night. It could, you know. Uh, but, uh, those kinda meetings right there, you really, especially when the public is there, the public is visual. They wanna see, they wanna see your face. They wanna see what you're gonna say.
And even if.
And you should try to be there. But again, I don't know what the situation was. It could've been anything.
E- even if you can't, there's always the opportunity to call, call in and be on the phone during that. There was not a vote gonna take place that night anymore.
No.
It was just a, a special meeting.
Yeah.
So could've filled in that way, but by telephone and had the opportunity to talk to the citizens.
Well, he did, he did write a letter or he did write a note, right, babe, that, uh, yeah, he did write a note and, and explain what the situation was. He did give a statement, so, uh, you know, uh, anyway, let's move on. Uh, we got several things to get to, but one last thing in this. Uh, the tornadoes basketball team will be leaving in the morning to go down to Lakeland to play in the Class One A State Championship Final Four. They will be playing Hawthorne. They reseeded, uh, Michael, all these teams that made it with one or two seeds. So they reseeded the, those four teams. Bradford drew the four seed. So, uh, they're the low down the totem pole, probably right now the hottest basketball team in Class One A. With the exception of this, uh, Paxton High School that's in the Panhandle. But, uh, Bradford will play Hawthorne, the number one seed tomorrow night at six PM in Lakeland. If they win that, they'll play the, the number two seed Malone High School or the number three seed Paxton High School. And then those two winners will play on Friday night at seven PM, uh, uh, Friday, March the fourth. So we wanna congratulate our boys' basketball team. We actually covered that game the other night, which I thought was a really good broadcast. And, uh, I, I just wish them well. I think, um, that the way they playing, uh, Mitchell, keep it, eliminate the turnovers. You know what I mean? Keep the ball, uh, within play. So, um, yeah, I, you know, I, we'll see what Bradford does here. But, uh, I think they got a good chance, Michael Mitchell. What do y'all think? I mean, I'm, just real quick, your opinion. I think they got a good chance to win this whole thing.
They got a great shot.
I, I, I think so. My, my biggest concern with Bradford, uh, basketball team was exactly what you pointed out and what you pointed out. We were leaving too many points, rebounds and free throws.
Yeah, gotta have that for the charity stripe.
You've gotta drain those if you're gonna, you can't afford to give away, what'd they give away? Thirteen points?
They missed twelve, thirteen, twelve, thirteen points, yeah, they left on the stripe.
Yeah, I, I mean, I get it if you miss a, a three pointer. I understand that, no problem at all. Those free throws will make you or break you and I, I hope that that's something that we've worked on here, but I'm with Mitchell. I think that we stand a really good shot at this one. Hawthorne struggled. They only won by one point in double overtime.
At home.
At, at home. So I think that we've got a pretty good shot at taking it to the finals. Uh, I'm cautiously optimistic. I don't know much about the other teams.
I don't know much about them either.
But I, I think that the motivation's there. I think the enthusiasm is there and I think that if they just stay focused and they can really drain. The free throws when they need them, I think we bring home a state championship.
And I'll tell you what, during that game, they did, they did step it up in that second half.
They did.
And they did start doing a lot better job getting offensive and defensive rebounds.
Yes, they did.
And, uh, it, it helped them out big time.
Yeah, now.
Early in the game, they were.
Yeah, well, yeah.
They were getting boxed out.
Madison County was out rebounding them and we were the taller team. You start looking at height on those kids, we were the taller team and they was boxing us out and getting those rebounds. But yeah, Michael, and you hit it, free throws, got to have them. You win games on the charity stripe and you gotta play defense, which they did the other night, pretty good. All right. Hey, hey, how about some weather, Big Mike?
Yep, well, why don't we take a quick look at that? So we'll be right back with weather, right after this.
This weather report brought to you by Austin's Weather Service out of Keystone Heights. Find Austin's Weather Service on Facebook and have a detailed local forecast sent right to you.
All right, so a real quick look at the forecast. We've actually had some beautiful conditions here, but it's been really dry. Now we got a decent amount of rain. Uh, as far as the coverage goes, uh, yesterday, but we didn't get a whole lot of volume and that's where we're having some problems with it. Because we're getting into our dry season now. We start getting into, uh, the rainy season, we get into June, which by the way, June, folks, we are ninety-six days from hurricane season. Don't shoot the messenger. I'm just letting you know. We're ninety-six days away from hurricane season. Okay, hey, with that being said, uh, let's take a look at the forecast. We're gonna start with your pollen counts. Look at these numbers. David, I know you're thrilled with this. Look at the pollen count. Now we're looking at Wednesday at nine point five, but then the arrows show the story. Thursday, Friday, Saturday, ten point three to ten point eight. These are some of the highest numbers we have seen this season. And it's going to stay that way until we get a decent amount of rain. So if you have pine, uh, some grasses, juniper's also causing a problem now. So if you have allergies, don't be surprised if you have a bit of the runny nose and everything that carries on with it. Uh, again, we get rain that moves in here, kinda cleans it out a little bit like that, but it returns quickly. So you wanna make sure you stay on top of that one. Let's take a look at the regional forecast because I can tell you that there's no rain in the forecast for us and there's certainly no rain in the forecast anywhere around the southeastern United States. The map will show you clearly from Passagula, uh, which is gonna be at seventy degrees, stretching all the way across, all the way up to, uh, uh, Charlotte at seventy-three degrees. Beautiful conditions, sunny skies. We're talking blue skies all over the region tomorrow. Some clouds roll back into the forecast on Thursday, but then the weekend looks amazing. So we'll get into that. Locally for us though, the temperatures are seasonal, lower humidity levels, which is fantastic because that's what makes it comfortable for this time of year. But we're still gonna be in the eighties. We're talking about mostly sunny skies, a few clouds on Thursday, but again, bright blue skies Friday going into the weekend. Look for highs in the, uh, lower to mid eighties. Your lows in the forties, but warming up into the fifties as we get closer into the weekend. That is your local forecast and we will give it back over to Dave with the latest on the trivia.
All right. Thank you very much, Michael, for that great, uh, weather report. Uh, as we're moving on with the show here, again, David Rogers, Michael Heater, Mitchell Gunner and Dave Holland. Hey, don't forget, we've got trivia, trivia on Wednesday night at seven o'clock sharp. Go visit Michael Heater over at Fun Point. He's got a great trivia game going on there as well. Thursday night at seven-thirty at the Downtown Grill and Start with myself. Thursday night trivia answer is. Ooh, spring. Spring, there it is, Dave. Spring it on us. There you go. Right there, spring. So, uh, and the answer is category, usually around number four is where you'll find that. You'll have a chance to win first, second or third place over there. Twenty-five dollar gift slip, twenty-dollar gift slip, second and fifteen for third. So come on out and join us and make sure you come out and enjoy him, uh, uh, at Fun Point tomorrow night.
We're playing something a little bit different. We're gonna give this a try. Not sure if it's gonna work or not, but Sammy, the bartender, who also does our musical accompaniment, is helping me out here like that. And Dave, you'll be excited to know that we're gonna have a new category.
All right.
You ready for it?
Yes.
Folks, we're bringing back a classic. Name that tune. We are gonna be doing audio categories in addition to some of the videos. That will be one of our new things. We're hoping to kick that off this week to join our other great categories. You gotta be kidding. Crazy laws in the United States. We give you the law, you figure out the state that it's from. Did you know? And you weren't there Wednesday night, but I will tell you, for those of you that did not make it out there like that, Dave Holland and the rest of you that didn't make it out here, it is still, to this day, illegal. To push a live moose out of a moving airplane in Alaska. That is just one of the amazing, it is, but it is on the books. We have all sorts of, we have so much fun. Appetizer poker, a chance to win poker hand and get a free appetizer as well. Wednesday night, seven PM, fantastic time. Thursday night, seven thirty PM with the man himself, David Rogers. Pick a night, come out, do both nights if you want to.
Absolutely.
We have a great time.
Absolutely.
I'm, I'm disappointed.
Why?
I thought Michael was gonna say they're gonna have, start having NHRA history.
That'll be Thursday.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'll be Dave.
Uh, uh, and actually that'll be Friday, so I've gotta do that. Anyway, all right, there we go. And now everyone's favorite segment that brings back a little history. Brought to you by our great media partners, WAG Eagle Country, one oh six point three FM. Chuck, Mary Kramer, Lynn Vellis, my bosses on Friday nights. Along with Mr. Bagwell now, the new color commentator and the Bradford County Telegraph, John Miller, John Ryan Tillman, Mark Crawford, and of course Clint Smalley. Dave, here's what's the dates. And hey, we've got some telegraphs, uh, some headlines, not telegraphs, from the Bradford County Telegraph. Hey, hey, and, uh, these are the headlines from the Bradford Telegraph. They're the first week of March in what year, Dave? Commissioners choose new district map. Hawkins to face trial. Teacher deal could be ratified. Was it March of twenty-twelve, March of twenty-fourteen, or March of twenty-sixteen? Commissioners choose new district map. Hawkins to face trial. Teacher deal could be ratified. Was that March of twenty-twelve, March of twenty-fourteen, or March of twenty-sixteen? That is the first week of that, uh, particular month, which is March, in that particular year, Dave. I see a smile on your face, you already know it. I'll read the first one. You read the second one, you rethrow one, man. Here we go. Three of five county commissioners attempted to settle a redistricting, redistricting issue for Bradford County in a special session. Commissioners Ross Chandler, Danny Reddick and Lala Sellers chose a map recommended by committee of citizens. But Commissioners Eddie Lewis and Doyle Thomas voted against the proposed map.
Hmm, some names out there that might help you with that.
Absolutely.
Hey, Benjamin Hawkins could face charges for involuntary manslaughter for his alleged role in the death of John Massey in Las Vegas, Nevada. Hawkins was a teacher and coach at Bradford High School at the time of the incident involving an argument that escalated, resulting in massive head injuries suffered by Massey, resulting in his death.
The Bradford County School District and the teachers' union came to a closer agreement following negotiations over, uh, step increases for teachers. Retroactive pay raises were included pending a final approval by both sides.
Again, hey, give you a little hint right there on the, uh, what's the date category. Commissioners choose new district map. Hawkins to face trial. Teacher deal could be ratified. Was that the first week of March twenty-twelve, first week of March of twenty-fourteen, first week of March of twenty-sixteen? I know the answer already, just because, well, the first and the second one, the second one really for me, not so much the commissioners. So we're gonna check the comments again. Welcome into the show, Michael Heater, sending it for the Byron Bagwell. Dave Holland producing the show back there, bringing all the beautiful graphics, all the beautiful footage. Our local guru and motorsports expert, Mr. Mitchell Gunner. He's gonna be on his big wheel this weekend. Coming around trying to collect surprises for his, uh, car show. So check Mitchell out on the big wheel and myself, David Rogers, of course. Your host.
Off the rails.
Yeah, off the rail. So here we go. All right, we got guesses coming from the audience. Michael, do we wanna go ahead and close this part out and then do that or do we wanna do that?
Well, why don't we give chant, yeah, so now's the time for everyone to go ahead and put in your answers while we delve into February drawing. Because today's March the first, we have a February winner we need to pull, don't we?
Right, we sure do. And then Mr. Edward Pettiprindt asked me, did you get his certificate to it?
I do, actually I've got it and I will make sure I bring it down to you, cause we're right there on Wilson Road. I'll make sure I get that.
There you go, Mr. Edward Pettiprindt. Here we go. David Kilgore, welcome in. Kathy Sterns, welcome in. Austin's Weather Service, good evening everyone, good evening to you. Sylvester Warren is on. Melvin Johnson's on. Noah Gibson, Fritz is on. Hey Fritz, nope, Randy Brooks is on. Austin's Weather Service, that's perfect timing, David. Well, I don't know what kinda timing I did there, but anyway, it's going. Tammy Test on, ready, one, two, three.
Hello, Alvy.
Kevin How's on. Hey, my ex-partner there, Gail Allen's on. Jeff Goins, Joey Schufert, Michael Box, Samantha Jones, Roy Jackson. Fred says, wow, what we're talking about. Tatum Davis is on, how about that? Melissa Krebs. Z from the Hot Toppings with Z and Tuck. Yes, he's on. Good evening, sir. Anytime you wanna join the show, you feel free to call us, come on. We'll put you on, talk about what's going out there on the west coast. And by the way, thank you for the last two invites. I was on the show with him last two weeks. Great show, um, so he's, uh, doing a really good job. Hope Alvy can see you guys at the fair. Absolutely, he will. If you bring him, he'll see us.
That's right.
Donna Souls is watching. Jody Dodge. Donna Souls is watching. Jody Dodge, watching from New York. Hey, that's right. Fred says recruit schools playing, re-recruiting schools. Yep, I agree with that, man. You got that right. Dave Holland, I'm hopping on the backseat of that bike. Lots of laughs.
I might be going to Daytona next weekend.
Oh, hello. Hey, Daytona will never be the same. Trent Bryant, Chuck Smith, Randy Galian Smith is on. Steve Jaeger's on. Hey, Sharon Pettiprindt, the model Sharon Pettiprindt. Good evening, Miss Pettiprindt. Tammy Testone, Alvin will love that touch of truck. I know he will and I know for sure. John Gardner from Pascagoula, Mississippi, my hometown. Robert Griffiths, Dorothy Starling said, play electric, said no. Well, we figured they did. I mean, they don't really want to do it. Not really.
Kind of figured.
Yeah. Raymond Roden's on. Robert McGee. Good evening to you, sir. Melissa Crims is on. Steven Jaeger, fantastic point of view. What we were talking about with the county commissioners meeting and some of the other stuff we talked about and what you broke down. So great job. Phil Jackson says, I agree with y'all guys 100%. Greg Roll is on. Ricky Autistics on. Billy Jackson's on. Eddie Sigmund, they don't have a budget. Well, that's what I was trying to tell these guys and these guys know that. I don't think half of them know what a budget is or even really see one. And if they have, I can guarantee you they can't break it down for you. Yeah. So all right, don't get me started back on that. Eddie Sigmund says, I got that started the other night. Did he did?
Yes, he did. Yeah.
Yes, you did. Alan Parrish, one of the most balanced explanations of the fire rescue service issue that I have heard. Thank you for explaining the facts.
You're welcome, chief.
Yeah, absolutely. Wow. Nice. Bobby Gibson from Birmingham, Alabama. Home of the tide. He loves the tide around Tuscaloosa. Who cares? No, I love you, Bobby. We just don't care. Jared Dukes is on. Eddie Sigmund says, sorry, got to go. Have a good night. Good night, sir. Barbara Zipper is on from Lake Butler. Roy Jackson says 2016.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So let's start doing that. Yeah, there you go. Here you go. Yeah, there you go. Roy Jackson says 2016. Melissa Crim says 16. Anna Alvarez Hernan is watching. Thank you. Randy Brooks has 14. Miss Testone says 14. Shirley Bagwell, good evening, mom. Sorry Byron couldn't be here. We know he's got some things going on. Love you, but hey, we appreciate the cake. We are going to have a piece of that and the ice cream and the strawberries. Thank you for dinner the other night. I know Michael couldn't be there, but hey.
Yeah, she, she might be watching.
Oh.
It's diet cake.
Oh.
Okay.
Diet strawberries too.
Low sugar.
What was the question? Can we go back to the question? So it wasn't another topics. There you go. Diet strawberries. That was pretty good.
Okay.
All right, here we go.
All right.
All right, here we go, Ms. Shirley. Here we go. Commissioners choose new district map. Hawkins to face trial. You remember Mr. Hawkins and teacher deal could be ratified. Was that March of 2012, the first week of March 2012, first week of March 2014 or the first week of March of 2016? There you go, Ms. Shirley. I'll give you a chance to answer that. Got everybody's comments. Are we ready?
Okay.
We'll draw and then we'll, we'll see who the winner is.
All right. So, so I broke out the old yellow helmet because the black helmet we had is kind of taking on a whole new.
Boy, I tell you, did anybody see that helmet?
I don't think anyone has seen this.
Well, what, after we do this, why don't you show everybody the helmet?
Well, we could do that. So we're, we're going to break out the old, the old fire helmet here. We got, got, got a bunch of stuff.
Right, too. Remember we had a bunch. Remember the week prior to that? It was like almost everybody.
Yeah, exactly. So I'm gonna let you reach in.
All right.
There we go.
Let me see here. Let me mix them up. I think I've got one. Let me see. Did I get the right one? I hope so.
Well, let's see.
Let's see if this is the right one.
There we go.
All right, Mitchell, listen here.
It is Shirley Bagwell. Miss Shirley Bagwell.
Hey, there we go.
There we go with another winner. How about that? She's twice now, right?
Yes.
She's won it twice.
Yes, she's won twice.
Yeah, there we go. How about that? Ms. Shirley Bagwell, you are the winner of the $20, $5 gift certificate. Give it to you on Thursday for sure.
There we go.
All right. Phil Jackson says 2012.
Okay, so Phil says 2012?
Yep. All right. I don't have any more in at this time. So I'll go around the table. I know, Michael, you can't answer it. So I'll start with Dave. 12, 14 or 16.
I was thinking 2012.
Okay. 2012. All right. Okay, Dave.
Dave's 2012. Okay.
Sharon Pettiprindt said 2014, by the way, Michael.
That's a good answer.
Mitchell?
I believe I was running office in that year and that year would be 2012.
So you believe you were running for office then? All right. I believe, and I think this is going to be true, I believe that that was 2014. Because Alvin graduated in 15. I think that happened a year before she graduated with that. So I'm going to go 14. And you have many other guesses. Pettiprindt says 14. You've got her. Hey, Renee Stegall Shaw, glad you can join us. Hey, we're right in the middle of the thick of things. We're doing what's the date. Are you, are you ready? Give me a quick answer. 2012, 2014 or 2016? Probably going, what am I answering? Does it, does it, I guess it doesn't really matter, does it? All right. So we got a winner already. Shirley Bagwell, congratulations from last week. All right. And the answer is Wakeport. Let's get it, Brian. Let's get it.
And the answer is?
And the answer is, look at Mitchell Gunner, 2012.
Because I remember talking about the redistricting. Yep, there you go.
Yeah. Good job, Mitchell Gunner. Dave, did you say 2012? You did too, Dave. You're the winner.
Yes, he did.
You did. You said 2012. Phil Jackson said 2012.
First, that first.
And who else? So that was pretty much it. Just one. Phil Jackson, you're already starting off good.
There you go.
One person in.
Yep.
Good job, huh? I like the way we try to trick people, don't we? I didn't really know that, man. I was just digging like that, going, oh, stab.
I was sitting here when it was.
When you said you were probably going, yeah.
For school board that year.
But you know.
Remember going to the meetings and talking about the redistricting? So it had to be 2012 because that was the election of November the 12th.
And you know, Michael brought up a good point about the commissioners that were there. You know, all those names, those names really, but you know, I was thinking nine years ago is when that Hawkins thing happened. I cannot believe that that was not almost.
10 years, 10 years, 10 years to the day.
My God, it just seemed like I was witnessing that on TV, you know, when they were showing the footage and everything.
This edition of the Bradford Telegraph with those headlines on it was March the first, exactly 10 years ago.
Wow, exact, wow, to the exact.
Yep, exactly right.
Oh, hey, that's very good. Renee Stegall Shaw says, I've got a question, David. What's that stuff on Mitchell's face? Well, I don't know. I can ask him. What is that on your face, by the way?
I don't know. I decided to just grow it out a little bit.
Renee Stegall Shaw, this is a perfect example of a Fu Manchu.
I was going to color it and get rid of the gray, but I was afraid it might look a little ridiculous.
Oh, no, she didn't go there. She said, is he opening up a fried chicken? That's what I, she's crazy, I told you. Hey, she's lighting your deal.
I like chicken.
I know. Yeah.
Everybody needs a little Mitchell.
Oh, God, man. I tell you, she's something else. All right, guys. Hey, great job there. We have us a winner. Mr. Pettiprindt, you're going to get yours tomorrow. Ms. Shirley Bagwell will get hers on Thursday. Hey, Dave, let's take a quick, quick, quick commercial break. And then we're going to come back and talk just a little bit. We're starting a little bit about what's going on over in the Ukraine with Russia and China and Taiwan. We'll be right back in this commercial break.
Hey, tornado fans, this is Kirk Miracle of Miracle Automotive and Towing, proud sponsors of tornado football. I want to welcome you to beautiful Star Florida at David Hurst Stadium and thank you for letting us be a part of this community. We're here for more than your automotive and towing needs. We're here to be part of tornado country. Go Big Red.
All right, guys. Welcome back to on the spot with David Rogers. I'm your host, David Rogers, running around inside. Michael Heater filling in for the Byron Bagwell. Our local guru and motorsports expert, Mr. Mitchell Gunner sporting the Fu Manchu and opening up his own new fried chicken restaurant called Motor Chicken.
And we actually use real motor.
Motor oil to grill the chicken.
Yes.
And cook the chicken. Dave Holland.
We're synthetic now. 5W20.
Okay, very good. Hey, at least you're telling everybody. Hey, what kind of calories are in that, by the way?
A lot.
Yeah, I think. Dave Holland, our producer, welcome back. Hey, let's just dial in real quick. I'll throw the subject out there and I'll get you guys' opinion. Everybody, unless you've been under a rock, y'all know what's happened within the last week, week and a half. Russia has invaded the Ukraine and some, some things going on there in that country and with Russia as well. Not only within that country, but all over that region, everything that's going on there. And of course, you know, we can't forget about China trying to invade in on Taiwan as well. So I'm going to turn it over to Michael first. Michael, give me your take on the, the Russian and Ukraine deal here.
Okay, so I'm, I'm not going to delve into the, the, the meat potatoes of what we already know. I will tell you that as of this afternoon, it was reported that the main invasion force of the Russians was 40 miles outside the city of Kiev. And they were moving in because the convoy that was coming in was 40 miles long. So by the time that the first vehicle gets to the city limits, you're still talking 40 miles going back. So they're planning to entrench themselves. Negotiations are underway for a peace accord that they're trying to work towards. And to some credit, the United States government joining other countries around the world have said that we will impose sanctions. And some of them could be potentially crippling to the Russian economy. Even locally, a lot of restaurants and bars and places like that are getting rid of Russian vodka. They're actually trying to sell the Ukrainian vodka as a way to try to help stimulate. There's one problem with this and that is this. Sanctions are fine unless your government is funding the invasion. And since the United States is buying 40% of Russian oil because we shut down the Keystone Pipeline and we continue to rely on foreign oil, we as a nation and our taxes are paying for the Russians to invade the Ukraine. That's all I'm saying.
Right. And, and, and those barrels of oil, I think was 157,000 barrels that we have recently bought from them.
Yeah, it was a more, a lot more than that.
So.
And it's every, every day.
Right.
We're buying, we're buying hundreds of thousands of oil, barrels of oil.
All right, let me see. Hang on a minute. I wanted a number. Let me see if I can think of the number I just seen. Correct me if I'm wrong here, guys. 59,000 barrels a day from Russia. And our pipeline could put out 159,000 barrels a day that he shut down.
Yes.
Is that right? Does that number sound about right?
That sounds about right.
Isn't that crazy? Like Michael said, why are we funding those guys? Why, what are we doing? You know, like he said, you could impose sanctions all day long. Hey, with, with, with food, you, you know, you could, you could really starve Russia if you wanted to. Hey, if we, if we do it and everybody else does it, that's within, within Europe and NATO and everybody else, you could, you could physically starve Russia to death. And I'm telling you right now, if we, I'd like to see what the State of Union address is going to be tonight. I know you was going to talk about that. I'd like to see what he's, what he's planning on saying. Hopefully what I'm, I hope he's going to say first and foremost, and again, it'll be crippling for the Democrat party says that if he was to open back up that pipeline.
Well, that's the most responsible thing that he can absolutely do is to, you know, make us back self efficient on our own oil and not have to get it from China. And also what we could do, we can get Germany out of the same situation with natural gas because we can ship them the natural gas that they need and they won't even have to get that from Russia.
Right. Europe's in the same boat too.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. And when you consider that the resources, and again, there is actually a lot of discussion. And the Biden administration has very quietly started talking about the potential of opening up the pipelines because they realize that there's a desperate need for this if we are going to try to resolve this in a somewhat peaceful and diplomatic solution. The problem is, is that, that little core of, of government leaders, if you want to call them leaders, that are, they're trying to hold this little group together to protect the Ukrainian interests and of course Hunter's deals and everything like that one. It will absolutely be a slap in the face to the far left because it was literally results back to them doing what happened with the previous administration, which was by honestly doing it correctly to support American effort, American workers and to become, as Mitchell says, self-sustainable. And then we can turn around and sell our gas and oil like that, the reserves to, to Europe, to Germany, to the places that needed. And we can cripple Russia's efforts on this invasion.
You'll cripple them a little bit, but there's still going to be that partnership between Russia and China that's going to keep on playing out. And so that, that's going to continue, but you can hurt their pocketbook, you know, and the thing, the thing is, if, if Biden decides to open up the pipelines again, I guarantee you his approval rating will go up.
Absolutely will.
Sure will.
Sure it will. It definitely will. Let me say something to back up on that too as well. You know, Russia, I honestly, I knew Ukraine had some weapons. I knew they have, they have a, a pretty decent military. I actually thought Russia was going to landslide those guys.
Oh, no.
Do you know why Russia always has problems? I E, let me take you back 1979 when they fought Afghanistan. Remember that little ordeal? That didn't work out so great for them. Do you know why? I'm going to give you a chance. Do you know why that is? Do you know why Russia always has a problem? You want to take a stab?
Can I take a stab?
Sure, absolutely.
So for, when, when the Ukraine broke away from Russia, they became the third most powerful military force in the region. They take their, everyone, whether it's Georgia, whether it's the Ukraine, you know, Slavik Republic, all of these areas were able to build up their own military forces because they literally took what was positioned in their country, in their region from the Soviet Union when they broke apart here. So that was the reason why. Ukraine is actually a very well fortified effort. It also doesn't hurt when you've got thousands of residents and citizens who are not just living there, returning home to fight for their country. You want a lesson in patriotism, watch Ukraine.
Right.
When the president himself puts on camo, grabs a machine gun and says, let's go get them, boys. And off he goes. And there's pictures of him out going out.
Members of parliament.
Going out to protect their country.
Even one of the MMA fighters come back. The tennis pro gave up millions of dollars just to defend his nation.
You see what happened to Russia with Afghanistan, a 20-year war.
Absolutely.
Door to door, like.
Do you know why? And Michael hit on some of it right there. He did. Let me tell you what Russia always makes a fatal mistake, especially when it comes to land tactics and fighting on others' borders. Russia's military, and I read up on this today, is in three stages, three tiers.
Yeah, the breakdowns.
You already know, don't you? They got their somewhat military guys. Then you got another level, a little bit of training. And then you got your elite force. So what does Russia do? Instead of thinking things through, planning and strategizing things out, they think they can just send in manpower. Well, what they're sending is, it is un-inexperienced.
They're sending in the JV.
Yes, they are. They're sending in the JV squad first. And guess what you, the Ukrainians are doing? Like Michael said, they're powerful enough to overtake these guys and are starting to shoot these guys to pieces. Uh-oh, now Putin's thinking, uh-oh, well, that didn't work. So let me send the second wave in.
The varsity.
Yeah, yeah, the varsity. And then of course you got your college after that.
College.
Yeah, college, yeah. So they send those, those guys in. Okay, they start getting a little bit, you know, starts to get a little bit more even, but the Ukrainians are still kicking their tail. Then at the end, they send the elite forces in there. Well, by, by the time that happens, a 20-day war becomes a four-year war now. Because of, because they're, they're already holding the resistance. They're already holding back those forces. Now you're trying to send your elite forces in there and, and trying to, you know, trying to take over a, a, a position that has already been, the Ukrainians have already decimated two of their, you know what I'm saying, of their stages. Now you want to bring your elite. Now you wanna bring your elite forces in there to try to do something, and it just never works. What did that, Afghanistan then war last? How long did that last? Dave, did you say, was it twenty years? Holy mess. I, I'm telling you right now, man, Russia always has a time and a fit when it comes to these small countries. And them infiltrating these small countries, it seems to backfire on them.
Well, Vladimir is gonna be brought up on charges anyway.
Yes, he is.
Uh, because of targeting, uh, citizens.
Yep.
That are not, you know, holding guns, uh, citizens. And also he used a vacuum bomb the other day.
That is against the Geneva Convention.
The Geneva Convention.
Yes.
And now he is talking about using, uh, nukes. See, he's getting himself further and further back in a corner.
So, so now, and, and Mitchell, I want.
He's getting desperate.
Right, well, is, is he, is it desperation or is there more to it? Because I know that one of the things that's come up in discussion, uh, bust across the, the administration, the Biden administration and, and discussion around the world is, do you think that his isolationist tactics and his aggressiveness is due to a medical condition?
Well, a lot of people say that he has changed a lot here in the past couple of months.
Right.
His demeanor has changed, and that's also being questioned by citizens of Russia. They have actually taken to the streets and sort of protesting to move into Ukraine. And of course, what they're gonna do is lock them and throw away the key, lock them up, throw the key away. Uh, or put them in work camps and they're never gonna get out.
What is arrested? Six, eight thousand already protesters, if not more? I think that numbers went up today.
Well, and you know, he's also lost over four thousand troops.
Yes, he has.
They, they have been killed. Uh, and see, you know, the thing he doesn't understand that the Ukraine military has those stinger missiles.
Yes, they do.
That are really great to fight tanks. You know, they will penetrate the metal. And, uh, they're, you know, the Ukrainians, like you said, it's very patriotic. Uh, they're saying, hey, either we win or we die. They're, they're not scared. Uh, just like the, uh, the guardsmen of the island, you know, that was there. I think there was a total of sixteen. You know, the Russian ship was telling them, hey, lay down your arms and do this. And, uh, they basically knew that they were gonna die and they told the Russian ship to go F themselves, pretty much.
Yeah. The Ukrainian front, like Michael and Mitchell and Dave, you said, is very solidified. And, um, like you said, they, hey, they would rather die than go back to the old USSR ways.
Exactly.
And I'm telling you, hey, I'll take as many of you with me as I can. Uh, you know what mentality that reminds you of? What mentality does that remind you of almost? Even though in this, in this way, it's a good way.
That's fighting the British.
Could be.
Give me liberty or give me death.
Or how about, and I, I, I don't wanna compare it to this, but just, just the basis of it. Reminds you of a goddern almost terrorist type action move. Where, hey, I'm gonna give up my life to do what I need to do to harm your heart.
But, but when you think about it, though, I mean, that, you, you, you hit it on the head and, and actually you, um, Mitchell and Dave are spot on like that one. You, when you think about it, in their own way, American revolutionists were terrorists. They were domestic terrorists because they were fighting against the tyranny of the, of the British. So what you've got now is, well, and, and, and the difference here is that they've already broken free. Now they're trying to protect their freedoms and I'm all, I'm all about that. So which begs the question now, if, if the thing, so we are, we're twenty minutes away from the, from the, uh, State of Union speech. Um, you know, the president is now facing one of the lowest ratings of his presidency. It's down fifteen points since this time last year. He's like at between thirty-eight and forty percent. What do you, what do you think? I mean, we know what we would like to hear, but what do you think he is going to say in the State of Union address?
Well, first thing, not to say anything bad, but I just hope he's able to talk in complete sentences.
That would be a refreshing.
But, uh, you know, I think he's gonna talk about the sanctions that they've laid on, uh, here lately. And you know, the thing is, my question would be like some of the reporters. Why are you waiting so long and doing it in steps? Why don't you just throw it on them, all the sanctions across the board and crush them with sanctions?
You have to.
Why do you, well, we're gonna do these and these, and then we'll tomorrow, we'll talk about that. No. You go ahead and you lay the smackdown on them right away. You, you, you don't play games. And you know, of course, you know, you hear the thoughts of him using nuclear weapons, which I think that Biden will talk about that a little bit as well. Uh, that's probably something that we may be faced because we, we're gonna interfere. We're gonna send them weapons.
Yeah.
The United States is gonna send them weapons.
Already sent troops around that region as well.
We're gonna send weapons to them in Ukraine, and he's already said that is a threat and the sanctions are a threat to my invasion of Ukraine. I will unleash something that you have never seen before.
My military.
He is talking about nuclear weapons.
I have no mind, I doubt in my military mind that that guy right there, he's a KGB agent through and through. He thinks communistic, and I'm gonna tell you right now, don't, don't think he won't push that button.
I think Biden's gonna surprise us. I really think he's. And I think that, and I think that needs to happen. I think the only way to truly make an impact on this one, in addition to supplying the weapons to the Ukrainians to defend themselves, is that we've got to stop funding this invasion by purchasing Russian oil, supporting their budget. That, it's, it's crazy to think that you're going to go ahead and sit here and, and talk a good story about, oh, we're gonna do this, this one, and yet you're turning around every day buying hundreds of thousands of barrels of oil and you're funding this invasion force.
He better not, he better not come out and say, we're gonna lift the sanctions on Iran and we're gonna get our oil from there. Because I will be extremely ticked off.
I, you and a bunch of Americans too. Let me tell you another thing too. Hey, what, he needs to open up this pipeline. I, I'm hoping that's what he comes out and say tonight, like he said. He needs to get his approval rating back up, and he needs to say something and mean it when he says it and do it. So some of the American people will start backing him up and believing in what he says. But I'm gonna tell you right now, if you don't open up that pipeline, you are going to start seeing the deterioration of the American economy go into the craver. Because right now California is paying five dollars and something cents a gallon for gas. Are you telling me the people that need to work, wanna work, are they gonna be able to afford to go to work? Hundred dollars a tank full of gas or more?
Okay, but you think about it, though, because I mean, the, the price of oil has already hit a hundred and six dollars a barrel. It's the highest it's been in years. Uh, you know, the, everything has, has been going on the increase. And yeah, if you think that, you think California prices are high now, wait. Because there is discussion that if this goes through, that we could see gas prices in Florida pushing five, six.
And how are we supposed to go to work? The working American to keep this, who? What is the most important part of an?
I'd like to know how much the gas is in Hawaii.
Oh, yeah, good question. Let's find out.
Yes, find out.
Cause I guarantee you, it's right at what California is.
What is, what is the main?
It's probably six dollars.
What is the main part, what is the main part of an economy? You, you, you the working person. If you're not working and producing and, and, and making goods and, uh, trading, what good are we? We're only as good as our economy is. And if you, uh, you, you, all any of us can't go to work because we can't afford to go to work? Why go to work? You can't go, I mean, what's gonna happen? Everything starts stopping, production starts stopping, everything starts stopping. And then I'm telling you, you're gonna take, you're talking about a depression? You'll see a very bad depression if that happens. You think nineteen twenty-nine was bad? It'll be worse than that because of the amount. See, back in nineteen twenty-nine, it wasn't built up as, yes, we had large cities. We had different things that we were doing, but right now we're doing hundred times as much as back in those days. So the crippling effect will be even more devastating.
Well, I tell you, Dave, you know, I use ninety-three octane in my car.
Absolutely.
So I got six gallons of gas for thirty bucks today. That's how much it costs for six gallons was thirty dollars.
Isn't that nuts, Mitchell? Isn't that nuts?
It's crazy.
Let me read some while he's looking this up. Renee Stegall Shaw said, you look sharp, Mitchell. She was just joking about that. He doesn't have a medical condition. Putin has a mental condition. I could agree with that. Shirley says, I know Byron would love to be in them discussions and I wish he was here, man. He would love this right now. He'd be ripping it a good one, man. Byron, I hope you're on the show next week. We'll get into more of this.
I'm trying my best to fill in for you.
What's so worrisome about this? Because if they fire on a city close to the border of, say, no. Poland.
Yep.
Or a checklist of. And that missile accidentally moves over too far from its target and it lands in one of those other countries. Article five will come into play right away.
Yep.
And there will be.
It'll be full steam ahead, baby boy. Oh, man.
It, it will.
NATO forces, everybody, man, will just be storming that place like you wouldn't believe.
And what's so scary right now, they're trying to get Belarus, trying to get their military to help the Russian military because they are in contusions with each other. Uh, they have a, a Russian puppet that runs Belarus, and there is forty thousand troops like a hundred miles away from Poland right now. So I'm telling you, this Ukraine thing, the peace talks, you might as well throw out the door because peace talks are not gonna take place. Not gonna happen because Russia's gonna say, well, we'll quit if you give us Ukraine, and the Ukrainians are not gonna get it. They want the area to use those land, land, uh, land strips, those airports to launch attacks against those other countries that used to be part of Russia.
All right, and let's say we don't interfere. Again, how long is this war gonna last? This, we could be talking, we'd be sitting in March first, twenty twenty-three and saying, guess what? The Russians are still trying to take over Ukraine.
Well, the good thing is, the reason why some of them are stalling is because they're running out of gas and they're running out of food because someone did not figure that in.
No, they didn't. They're stopping and asking Ukrainian people. The Russian forces are stopping and asking Ukrainian people, hey, can I get some gas from you? Sure, man. Come on back here. I'll fill your tank right up for you. I'd blow them to kingdom come as soon as I put that gas in there. What you got, Mike?
So real quick here, so for those that were curious about this one, uh, prices in, in Hawaii, uh, have jumped two dollars in the last seventeen months. The lowest gas prices in, uh, uh, in Hawaii, uh, and this was as of last evening, was four dollars and forty-one cents, and that's on the big island. Uh, the average, the average is four ninety-nine. Uh, they're trending. And, uh, there are places, according to gasbuddy.com, where the gas prices, and this, this is kinda hard to see, this thing like that. I'll just take, you can take my word for it like that one, where, uh, the gas prices are, uh, pushing five dollars and thirty cents a gallon.
Could you check Alaska for me, big guy?
Alaska, I can check Alaska as.
Yeah, Alaska. I just, yeah, but you know, it's funny, you know, that's not, the, think the islands where they're at. That's not really a bad gas price. California's already hitting that already.
Right, but you gotta think it will continue to go. You gotta get gas to them, being on the island.
Yeah.
So it has to be shipped.
So, uh, Renee Stegall Shaw says, if they don't roll the teleprompter too fast, he might sound coherent tonight. Very good, very good.
I hope someone trips over the cord and your lights goes out.
You're going to laugh at this one.
Yeah.
Take a guess at how much, uh, Alaskan gas prices are.
I'm gonna say they're lower.
I'll give you a hint.
I'm gonna say they're lower too.
If you go down to the corner, you'd be right. Gas prices in Alaska are running at three ninety, from three eighty to three ninety, mid-grade at four oh three and premium at four twenty-three.
That ain't bad.
Not bad at all.
No.
That, that is actually cheaper.
It is cheaper. Isn't that crazy?
But again, they are, you know, here's the thing about Alaska, what a lot of people don't realize, that the Keystone Pipeline was shut down for construction in the lower forty-eight. Alaska has their own fuel reserves, and therefore they are able to maintain
Yes.
to a certain extent of what they are doing. So obviously you're gonna be able to do that. Uh, the biggest hit here, again, has nothing to do with the price of fuel. It is the taxes. California's always gonna be more expensive because their gas prices, they're, they, they charge nearly a dollar in, uh, excuse me, a dollar twenty in gas taxes. And they'll do whatever they can to add to it because they've got a plan for roads and to pay off, uh, politicians. Oh, did I say that?
Oh, yeah, you did.
So, uh, but yeah, so, so, but, but on average, that, and the fuel prices have stabilized. Here's the issue. If they do pull the trigger tonight, and again, we're ten minutes away from the, from the, from the speech. But if they pull the trigger tonight and say, okay, we're not buying fuel, we need more fuel from Russia, I can assure you that gas prices will likely increase by fifty percent and possibly double over the next four to six weeks simply because of, of that. And I can already tell you that they've already started releasing more strategic oil reserves, uh, to try to combat this one. Which coincidentally, by the way, for those of you that are keeping score, the only reason why we can do that is because the previous administration bought up all the fuel when it was less than nothing and restocked this.
Bought it for less than pennies.
That's right.
All right.
It cost them more to ship it.
Yeah, than it did for the thing. All right, real quick, and we'll shut the show down here real quick so we can go and check this out. Renee says, okay, yep, we got that. Probably talk about climate change, Phil Jackson says.
Oh, can I speak on that real quick?
Real quick.
Carrie. That is all he talked about, that he was afraid that this war was gonna take away from the environment and the Green New Deal.
Okay.
Carrie, he was more concerned about that than people losing their lives. What a piece of crap.
What a piece of crap. You're right. Edward Pedder Brennan, Putin owns Biden and his son, okay? Yeah, we know that. Shirley's got the, probably the best point of the night, and it's something that we spoke about. He said, she says, he has to open up the pipeline if he has any chance of getting his approval ratings up at any cost.
Exactly right, sure.
He's gonna have to do that.
So say it the winner.
So say it the winner. All right, let's go and close the show now. Me too. By the way, thank you Shirley, real quick. Thank you. We're gonna tear into this here in just a few minutes. Thank you for that. On behalf of Mr. Michael Heter sitting in for Mr. Byron Bagwell, Mr. Dave Holland, our producer back there, kicking over those graphics. Mitchell Gunner, i.e. the racing guru, and myself, David Rogers. God bless you, guys. Have a great Tuesday night. Check out the State of Union address. We will divvy into that and more on next Tuesday night's show. Go tornadoes! Let's bring back home another state championship Friday night. God bless you, guys.